In progress.
Okay, welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen meeting for March 7, 2024, 6:00, 6:10 PM now. So everybody's aware, we're recording via Zoom, also it's being livestreamed with Facebook, and it's also on WCAT6, which is our local access network. If anybody else is recording, please let us know, so we can let the rest of the public know. If you get called upon, or you're gonna speak, please identify who you are, and what your position with the town is, or who you are, if you're a resident or not. That meets our social media requirement. Can I please have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Just gonna take something out of order here, because we have a new building commissioner in there here, and I know he's a busy guy, and he's been working all day, so we're probably gonna take him out of order, just to get him handled before we move on to anybody else. Are you guys good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
This way, we're not holding you up all night, waiting for the meeting. So we're gonna go right to Agenda Item Number 5, Discussion Impossible Vote to Appoint William R. Cantal as the Towns Building Inspector/ Zoning Enforcement Officer for a one-year term, anticipated vote. Okay, sir, so we've been working with you to try to bring you on as a new building commissioner for the town. We've interviewed you, you're definitely qualified, knowledgeable. You guys had a chance to meet him yet?
No.
No.
Okay, so the other Board of Selectmen, Rich Ihawker and Mr. Derek Belize, and then you know Mr. Farrar, and Mrs. Karen Dusty, who is our Secretary for the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. So can you please tell us a little bit about yourself real quick, so they know?
Well, I've been a commissioner, actually I started as a contractor in Burnfield in the early 90s, and I did that up to 2018 or so, when I became a local inspector in South Ridge. I was hired to do what's called Table 110 inspections, which had to do with multifamilies, and then also annual inspections for liquor license issuers, assembly buildings over 50 people after could see, so on and all that. So I did that for 18 months, and during that time, I became the Commissioner in Wales, which I still am. And then, when I left South Ridge, I became the Commissioner of Burnfield. So I was doing those two towns when the opportunity of Berry came up, which is regional, and that covers four towns, so I cover six towns right now. But they're all next to each other, and I live in Burnfield, so it's relatively close. The farthest one I have is Petersham, but they're also all very small for the most part. I think, well, once Warren comes on, it'll be the second largest one, I think, after Berry, but it might be close, it might even be larger than Berry, I'm not really sure.
Berry's got a spy, a few hundred people.
Yeah, so they're both pretty similar. So when I took over, there was a lot of organization I had to do. It was also COVID, so there was a lot of change in the systems, but I believe that I organized it pretty well. And the main thing is having very good administrative assistance, which I do, which I brought along, you know, as I come up. And if you have a good assistant, then the office runs really well. So my understanding is that you guys have a good assistant, and so I'm looking forward to getting things going. So.
Very good, very good, sir. Do you have any questions?
I think my biggest concern is just that you have enough time for the town.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
That's our current issue right now.
All four communities that I work in are only four days a week, so I have Friday as a backup day, which I could commit, but I don't feel it's gonna be an issue. As I said when we first met, I go through Warren six to eight times a week, on my way from Burnfield to New Braintree or to Berry, and so I'm always going through this town. So it's not gonna be an issue at all. I know that in the past, in some towns, getting inspections done was an issue. Nobody's ever complained about me not doing my inspections, and the only time I've ever missed them was just do an oversight, and that's been very rare. So I do my inspections. I enjoy doing the inspections for the most part. I try to avoid doing ones that are gonna be intrusive on homeowners. So usually such things like window replacements, I don't go inside the house, because I don't think that's necessary. So I'll just call the applicant, make sure they're very happy with everything, and if they haven't, then we close that one out, so.
I think our, well, at least my concern would be also like kind of the letter of the law. We have some properties right now in West Warren that are, have some issues, and we really need somebody to hold those others to them.
Enforcement's very much a large part of the job. I don't go around looking for enforcement. I let them come to me, but I have complaint forms that I put out, and I'll take a complaint that's valid from anyone, but there has to be a valid complaint. I don't act on people that are trying to use the department as a tool.
Yeah, yeah.
If you have a valid complaint, I'm going to follow up on it.
Okay.
Now, working with other departments, are you good with working with other departments?
Absolutely.
Board of Health, place of departments.
Board of Health is not one that, we work, we don't really work together, we work side by side, whereas the Fire Department and the Electrical Department are the ones that I work with together all the time. But the Health Department's important too, I don't get me wrong, but it seems like they don't overlap us as much as Electrical and Fire. But yeah, I mean, absolutely, you know.
Okay, very good. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I'm a former architect, so I've been dealing with inspectors, building inspectors all the time.
Sure.
And what I really would like to see here is like a way to help our clients when they come in, you know, and showing them, okay, this is what you have to do. In some towns, you get this like, oh, your form is not complete, go back to your homework. Be that kind of person to help our residents, you know, the process.
I understand that train of thought and that, but you have to be careful, because normally when someone doesn't understand the process, it's because they're not experienced at building. Almost everybody that is experienced at building understands the process and follows through correctly. So when somebody comes to me and says, oh, I don't know what form to fill out, or how to fill out a form, that's kind of like a red flag, that that person is going to need guidance from probably somebody, a professional, private person. Because I don't wanna put myself, my office of the town, in a liability position by making them do things wrong, or by telling them how to do things. I will not, I don't engineer, design, or plan anything. I just review and inspect. And so it gets, you know, when you're, basically it's homeowners that are the ones that want to do that, they wanna file the permit, they don't wanna pay for a contractor, so they think they can just do it. They've watched one too many TV shows and think that they can be contractors. So with them, as far as filling out the paperwork, everything is in the code book, they need to sign the form saying that they are the contractor, they're responsible to follow the code, and the code books are available, they just need to go and look at it. We'll tell them which forms to fill out, but we're not gonna tell them how to do their part of the job. So I think that's just, I don't wanna put my office or the town in any kind of situation like that.
Of course, I'm not asking you to do that, I'm just saying that, you know, the way sometimes happens, it's a little difficult for the people to, they sometimes kind of say, hey, can I, I need to, I need to, I would like to put a garage, what do I need?
Well, see, that's where it gets sticky. What do you need? Well, there's a lot that you need. So my office is not a consultant firm, and if you have no clue at all about how to put a garage onto your structure, you probably shouldn't be doing it. So I mean, we'll say, yeah, you need to fill out this form, you need to provide me with your homeowner's warning affidavit, your workman's comp, your debris disposal, you probably may or may not have to go to zoning, I don't know that stuff until you give me an application. Well, how do I do that?
Hire a contractor.
Yeah, so yeah, we, you know, that's what the administration office is open for, here's all the forms, here they are, fill them out. And then that's when it gets kind of, we'll help as much as we can, but we're not going to take over the project for them. And that's what a lot of them wants to do, so. Good, okay.
Did you have anything, sir?
No.
No? Do you have anything else?
No.
Anybody public have any questions? No? Yes, two.
Yeah, Jer McKeon, Vice Chairman of the Town. Just, are you planning on opening office hours?
Well, the office is open, right? Yeah.
So it's by appointment, it'll be by appointment for office hours? When we're discussing, one of the issues would be, again, you're there to inspect and ensure the project's being done correctly, and enforcement. He's gonna teach Sarah to everything that she needs to know, make sure she's up to par for anything administrative. So he's gonna sit down with her, give her office hours, make sure she's up to par in where she needs to be on all the forms and what needs to be done. And as far as the inspections, she'll notify when inspections to be done, and he'll go and inspect it. But a lot like what he's been saying is, the Building Department, I think, kind of get away from the idea that the Building Department does the project for you. It doesn't. You know, you're right, you put the town in a position of a lawsuit, if you start designing their project and saying, you should do this, you should do that, build this this way, then you get into a problem, because again, if-
If I'm wrong and something happens, then the town's liable, or could be. So I mean, there's a lot of different angles to it, but I'm there by phone to anyone that needs it, and if they have valid questions, but if they just call me up and say, hey, can you call me? No, you need to tell me what you want me to call you for, and what it pertains to. People try to call up to get answers on stuff that, I mean, it just boggles my mind if they think that the Building Department is responsible for it. So, you know, if you have a valid concern, question, you call my phone, and I'm calling you back. That's always sort of it.
Yes, Chris.
My question is germane to like talk to Jim in the Community Development Advisory Committee about the possibility of bringing back like a housing rehabilitation program. So my question would be, is there some salary involved, or is it all paid through the pulling and the execution of permits?
There is a small salary, but then there's also, it's, a lot of it's done by the permits, that's how it's, the Building Department, that particular position has been built off. Is, he's basically doing the work by the permits that are coming in, and that's how he gets paid most of his salary.
Right. So if we were to resurrect a housing rehabilitation program, sometimes a situation would come along, whereas the building inspector would be asked to sort of evaluate a structure and the potential for, so not necessarily a permit has been pulled, but there would be some time involved to take a look and to see if it's right for a rehab project. So that's why I asked if there was at least some salary involved.
There is some, and I don't know if that's something you've ever done before, or-
That sounds a little out of scope.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's a split thing, I have a selectmen, and then it's a certain percentage of a permit that comes in.
Would you be interested in looking at properties?
I will go as far as advise, you know, on what to do, as far as how far, you know, where they need to go to get their information. I'm not gonna go in and say, oh, you need to rip this out and put this in, and this and that, you know. I'll say, you know, I think you need an engineer on this, an architect on that, or, you know, a licensed professional will come in, construction supervisor come in and advise you on what needs to be taken down, and what needs to be.
What do you exactly look for?
Okay, client calls, claims to have some sort of an emergency, a leaky roof or something like that, you know?
Well, then you would call a roofer.
Well, if they're trying to apply for the program, you know, we first need to make a determination if there's a legitimate emergency involved.
To see if there's a leaky roof.
That's just an example.
Well, it might be depending on how leaky it is, if it's a drip versus like it's pouring over the-
Is it pouring over the electrical box, you know, is there a real help and safety issue here?
Because basically they can-
I didn't wanna get into depth in this, it was just a simple question. There is some salary involved, so that would indicate to me that there's a potential of asking the building inspector to take a peek occasionally.
I'm gonna help the town as much as I can. As far as that goes, any emergency situation in the code, it's allowed, you can go make any emergency repair at any time, you just need to file a permit the next day, so.
And that was the answer to twenty of the questions, which I did ask and need to answer that, about the roof. If you could fix the roof.
Well, if there's an emergency, how, what's the process?
Yes, it depends on what your definition of emergency is, but if water's coming in, to me, that's a repair, it needs to be done right away. So you just do it, and then you file for a permit the next day, or when you can.
Yeah.
That's not something that anyone's gonna be doing any enforcement on, so.
Anybody else?
How about references from the Board of Health for building inspections?
References for-
Yep, Board of Health goes out for health and safety inspection.
If they contact me with, you mean with violation or issues?
And I go out there and I say, okay, this is that, and I make a valid inspection, and I refer, because I know, I know the structural issues that-
Oh, absolutely.
Then I refer you, and you go out and-
Any board that has issues can ask my board to enact, you know, whatever enforcement we need. We're gonna go through as far as we can.
Sometimes we get calls for existing projects already built, and that there's a problem in that site. And the planning board is like, well, we don't have a jurisdiction to say, you have to go through the Building Department. That's something you take, right?
Yeah, every situation is different, so I'm not really sure what you're talking about. If you're talking about somebody doing work without a permit, or-
No, I'm gonna put it like a case, for example, there's a solar array, and then suddenly there's water runoff, and the neighbor is calling because the water's getting into his property. They always, they call the planning boards, like, we-
Yeah, because, well, we're not the enforcing body at that point, because the planning board doesn't have enforcement authority. So that would fall under the Building Commissioner, where it'd be enforcement because the permit's already approved?
Well, I don't think that that would fall under building or zoning, okay? I think that that would be more towards whoever approved the water runoff system. Now, I mean, I think that's something that would be handled through planning, because planning approves the plans, and then if the plan isn't work, then they take their special permit and take it away. And that's how you enforce that, your special permit, because your plan is not working, and your special permit was issued because of that plan. So if there's-
We need a body to determine that it's not working.
Yeah, okay.
Determine.
So enforcement, that, it could come from multiple offices, but water runoff is not generally something that the Building Department would handle. So, I mean, I'd have to do research on that, I haven't, I know that I had an issue in one solar field, but it was during construction. So we had a lot of enforcement at that time, and unfortunately for the operator, the DEP got involved, and it set them back almost a year to straighten that problem out.
Because the issue that we run is, the neighbor says something, the owner says something else, and then there has to be a judge say, yes, there's water runoff, this is not working, so, to be able to trigger something.
So that could be conservation, that could be planning, you know, it depends on where the water's going and what damage it's doing, but it's not generally something that would be under the Building Department. Now, and also maybe it'd have to do with how you buy laws are written too, I don't know, I haven't reviewed them, so. But I would research it as far as I can, that's all, I mean, that's all I can do. I know that, I heard that there's a rumor of them not following a plan by doing a lot of cutting that they weren't supposed to be doing, and one of the sites, so that's a clear violation of their plan. So you shut the whole thing down, and then deal with the legal parts of that, if the town wants to take that legality on. So I mean, there's that part to be keeping right too, you know, how far do you wanna take it?
Good, good. Anybody else? Good?
Yep.
I'm good. I think you're good. Good applicant? Uh, do a motion?
All right, so I'll make a motion to appoint William R. Cantel as the Town's Building Inspector slash zoning enforcement officer for a one-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Welcome to the team, sir. Thank you very much. And we'll get you sworn in while we have a certificate, right?
We don't.
Okay, we'll have a certificate, we'll sign it and, um, you get sworn in on Monday?
That sounds good, yeah.
All right.
And twenty o'clock tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I'll call you on Monday or stop by my office.
I'm gonna stop by Monday. I can't really give you a time.
Okay.
It'll probably be somewhere around two.
All right, that sounds good.
But you're, you're here till four?
Yeah.
Okay, so it'll be before four. Or I'll contact you.
All right.
The town's floor wakes up three thirty to get sworn in.
Okay, well, that's good news. That's good news.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving back to the beginning. Um, public hearing, uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty five, uh, twenty-four, Community Development Brick Grant Application. Okay.
Blic grant?
What?
Block grant.
Block grant.
Oh.
Yeah, it's supposed to be block grant.
Yeah.
What's a Blic?
Yeah, we don't apply for any brick grants.
Are you sure?
So, yes, public hearing for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, Community Development Block Grant Application. Sir, you're up!
My name's Christopher Dunphy. I'm a principal planner with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'd like to go through what we're proposing as part of our FY twenty-four C D B G application. And then after that, uh, is all done, I'd just like to just briefly update you on some other community development block grant matters. Um, so the Community Development Block Grant is a federal program, okay? It started in the early nineteen seventies and every year Congress has to appropriate funds to fund the C D B G program nationwide. The vast majority of funds, uh, are appropriated directly for what we call entitlement cities. These are generally speaking, cities of fifty thousand, uh, persons or more, and they get funds automatically from HUD, Housing and Urban Development Based on a Formula. And then once these entitlement cities get their funds, state governments get funds and then the state offers competitive applications for small towns and cities like Warren. So that's where we come in. I've been helping Warren for over twenty years now, uh, develop these applications. They're competitive applications annually and we've done quite well with it. So this year, um, uh, working with the Community Development Advisory Committee, uh, who is, which is chaired by Jeremy Olson, our Highway Surveyor, and Mr. I Harker's on it and a few others, Jim's on it as well, Jim McKean, uh, we, we sort of, uh, vet what we think are going to be good projects, uh, eligible projects and, uh, projects that are, that are gonna be helpful largely to a low to moderate income population. So, um, that is one of the national objectives of the Community Development Block Grant Program is serve in predominantly low to moderate income populations. And, and we've done this for years throughout the village centers where a lot of working folks are and there's a lot of needs, you know? It's got old infrastructure, old water lines, sewer, streets, sidewalks. So we've been successful in, in, in targeting resources towards these village centers, both West Warren and Warren Center. Now, we've been caught up in Warren Center for the last several years in the school street neighborhood, but this year we're proposing to go back to West Warren and do some work there. So the proposed projects, um, are going to, um, be focused in West Warren Village, specifically River Street and Central Street. Uh, we've met with the, the West Warren Water District, um, several times and they've informed us that the water lines on these two streets are asbestos blind and they're undersized. So for those two reasons alone, uh, we think it's worthy to go ahead and seek funds to replace them. Uh, they're either four inch or six inch lines, which is undersized, eight inches typically the standard for, for fire protection and for delivering portable water within residential areas. And, uh, and asbestos has been determined by some to potentially have some long-term health effects. But, um, you know, we're gonna rectify that with this application hopefully and, uh, provide some new water lines for River Street and Central Street. Specifically, the grant calls for both streets to be designed, okay? River Street to be one hundred percent reconstructed with the new water line, new road surface and improved stormwater drainage system. Due to the limitations of the grant application, we'll only be able to afford the installation of a water line on Central Street, but we hope to come back in a future year and finish off the road, the, the sidewalk surfaces, the road, the drainage and so on and so forth. So this application, uh, is capped at nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We hope to pursue that full amount, okay? And, uh, before I forget, the other project, which I'm very excited about, our Community Development Advisory Committee has met several times with the Parks Commission. And we examined Cutter Park as a park that is long overdue for some, uh, for some upgrades. First of all, it's not handicapped accessible. There's no parking. There are some private parking that's available nearby, but there is no public parking in the area. The equipment is extremely old and it really hasn't seen any improvements for many, many years. So, uh, we're very excited to, uh, be able to pursue funds that is just going to be for design only. With C D B G funds, typically the state likes to see you having a design in hand first for public facility projects. And then once you have a design, then you can pursue construction funds, so.
So you guys are gonna look at acquiring more parking, like, uh, the parking that we're currently kind of borrowing sometimes? May, maybe we can acquire that land?
Well, uh, quite honestly, it, it's a neighborhood park and, and we're not looking at taking a lot of the, of course, the design's gonna flush this out, so we're, we're gonna hire a professional that's gonna work with the Board of Selectmen, the Parks Commission, the Community Development Advisory Committee to develop a good plan, a good design. And, uh, so, but at least preliminarily, our thoughts were, we'd at least provide for some ADA parking, you know, van, couple other spots. Uh, and if it turns out that there's other available parking, yes, but we work-
You can't park on, on the street ADA parking, right?
Right.
So it has to be a parking lot and the only parking lot we have belongs to the housing complex, which they posted that they don't want anybody parking there other than the housing residents.
No, they, they've posted they don't want parking overnight as far as I-
Overnight?
It's just overnight parking.
Well, the fact is, is this lot is deeper than most people think. It, it actually goes quite, quite a far, quite a ways back. And there's also a ball field that we discussed with the Parks Commission that they don't really use that much. So that could be a trade-off is using some of that land that goes way back-
Pushing a little bit.
And pushing things around, juggling things around a little bit, uh, introducing some utilities.
So we wouldn't need to acquire that parking lot?
I'm sorry?
So, yeah, it's not your plan, we don't need to acquire that?
I, I don't-
Cause I know we talked about that before, where we could see, maybe we can get that?
We looked into it a long time ago and it never played out. And just what we've heard through the grapevine is that that is, when there's bad weather, that's where the residents park.
Okay.
So I, I'm not hopeful that we'll get that, but no one's ever told us we can't park there. Uh, there is overnight parking signs that are there, but no one has ever come to us and said, hey, you can't park there. Historically, it, it's been, you know, we've been doing it for as long as I've been alive and lived in town. So, um, would it be nice to have it? Yes, but I, I, I guess I just feel like it's doubtful that that is a real viable option.
Well, we can create our own, create our own parking.
I think that's what we're, we think.
We think that we'll have enough space. Well, here are the things we, we talked about, if you wanna know, but again, this is just-
Cause I know there's a water line that goes up in the middle there too.
This was just conceptual at this point in time. Uh, the reason to get a design funds is to get a professional in that will work with the town, get a, a proper property survey, see exactly where the borders are and go from there, you know? Uh, but, you know, we talked about a possible small little water feature for, for the little ones in town, uh, some storage area, which I'm sure Jim would appreciate, um, uh, enhance all the equipment that, that's there. Of course, I, I kinda like some of those old features too. I brought in some colleagues from my office one day and they were playing on them, they loved them, cause they don't see, they don't see that type of stuff anymore.
Ordinary stuff.
So maybe there's a way we can save it and get some new ones, you know? Make them all-
Classics.
Yeah, they are classics. So, yeah, so maybe some storage area, some, a water feature, some brand new equipment, uh, at least, at least a small parking area that is on town property. Uh, those were some of the ideas we kicked out. Perhaps a bathroom, we'll see. So, uh, again, this is all with the, the landscape architect firm, will work with the town and see what works best.
Well, if you make an ADA complaint, don't you have to provide a restroom?
Mm-hmm, no, not necessarily.
Because it's a park?
What's there has to be made accessible.
Yeah.
So.
But if you go over a certain amount of money, you have to?
I don't know if that's a, a law under the Massachusetts Access Board or-
Real parks, yeah.
It is with the building, but I don't think it is with parks.
Well, the town recently hired a, a consultant to examine that.
We're gonna look at that.
And, and I don't think that came up as a, a, a requirement under the law, so. But I mean, that, that would be a desirable thing that we wouldn't be opposed to, would we? It's, it adds another maintenance challenge though, doesn't it? A little bit, yeah? Yeah, it's okay. All right. So those are the two primary projects. So, uh, I'm going to package Central Street and River Street as one project, which will hire, if funded now, this is a competitive application, which will hire a, uh-
We know you can get it done.
Well, we'll see, you know? So, the thing is, this year, they've increased the amount in the one-year cycle to nine hundred and fifty thousand. And I know just by seeing the, the numbers on the applications that quite a few communities are applying. So this year will tend to be a little bit more competitive than in past years. And furthermore, uh, most of our past projects had a design in hand for our public works projects like School Street or, or, uh, you know, Quayback Street. This time, we're asking for design and construction. So we actually lose a couple points on the scoring for not having a, an engineering design in hand for a public works project, but I'm confident nonetheless. It's a solid application, uh, that, that addresses a, a very clear need, uh, and, and is well-supported. So we've got the need, we have the support and, uh, we have, uh, some plans to support that as well. So we don't just invent these things out of thin air. The Community Development Advisory Committee looks at past master plans, the municipal vulnerability plan, uh, the ADA plan, the open space and recreation plan. And, and these projects kind of emerge out of these plans and end up in these C D B G applications. So those are the two, uh, primary projects and, uh, the grant is due March twenty-fifth. Um, here to accept any, uh, we're up to number four on here. I know there are some folks that might wanna support the, oh, consequently, I received support letters from the Highway Department, uh, the West Warren Water District and the Parks Department and, uh, the Fire Chief.
All right.
So.
Do you need one from us?
Nope, you're gonna sign the cover letter.
Do you need one from anybody else?
They're always helpful to show the state that people are involved and they're actively, actively participating. I did talk to the chief a little bit and he said he'd be willing. On Central Street, you know, there, there may be some parking concerns as that, that street is being designed. You know, you got that very active market there now. And, uh, so we might wanna take a close look at that and see that we don't impact negatively.
You got the senior center, the post office, the market, um, there's a lot of stuff that's gotten to pick up over there now.
You got a, you got a church on that church.
A church as well, so, yeah, there, there are some things to look at. So I, I do know that Mr. Keen, McKean is, uh, representing the Water District and he also kinda, uh, maintains some of the parks. I don't know if you have anything to say on behalf of the West Warren Water District?
Uh, no, I was just looking forward and looking for the, the, uh, River Street and Central Street water lines. They are much needed, updated.
So, you know, I'm not an expert. Uh, what I said about the water lines and the asbestos is simply what I read online. My understanding is, is if they're intact, it's typically not a problem, but i- it's a good idea to replace those lines when you can, and especially if they're undersized, okay?
No, I, yeah, I'm absolutely, you know, I want them replaced, you know? I think everybody wants them replaced, that's not even a question. I think it's great projects and, you know, doing all the infrastructure work is gonna definitely help. And having the park done over, again, the parks have been neglected for a little while and it's because it's one of the easiest things to cut out of a budget when it's, comes down to it, but it's one of the things that a lot of residents look at when they come to a town, they look at how the parks look and they look how, how the roads are nice and what's being maintained and they, you know, you come in there and you're like, oh, do I wanna let my little kid play over there? No, I don't know, they might get petness or something from that. No, you, you wanna be able to be confident that they can play and have fun. And Parks Department does an amazing job with what they have and, you know, anything we can do to help them out and make, make the parks nicer for the community, we're gonna do.
I know that Ms. Ramsey met several times with your full commission and, uh, you also were an active part of the open space and recreation plan. Anything in merger chat of those, supporting what we're doing?
Well, I think that it was identified that there's a need and that residents want, you know, places for their kids to play and, you know, places for recreation for all ages. So we're really looking forward to, you know, working on this and going forward with, you know, hopefully something, you know, physically seen, you know, in a relatively short time, um, so that we can, you know, really, um, bring that-
Well, you're talking about municipal too, so relatively short time is like years.
It is years, it is years. I mean, but the time goes by fast. Um, we went through this process with Dean Park and that was almost twenty years ago. So it, the time goes by, um, and the equipment is expensive and that is why it hasn't been done and, you know, until now, we're, you know, you have to do it when it's, the opportunity arises and it looks like this is our opportunity to push it, so.
And Dean Park looks great, so if we can do something like that at Cutter Park, like it's gonna be awesome.
Dean Park's a nice park. The only problem with Dean Park is it's so set far back that nobody knows it's there.
Yeah.
But it's a great resource and I've met with a lot of the bands there and they got some good bands there and the petting zoo and, you know, Tatcha Truck.
Just, you know, all those things are coming again this summer and, and more hopefully. Um, but we do have bands on Friday nights, just throw our little plug out there, starting, I think it's the last week in June, don't quote me, but I think it's the last week in June and I think we have five weeks in a row.
Okay, very good. And fireworks this year too, right?
Fireworks, if you want that plug too, there's going to be a, um, concert, um, on the twenty, a hike and concert on the twenty-second of June, um, going out of Lucy Stone.
Yeah.
That's, um, that we're working in conjunction with-
How do you work a hike and a concert together?
It is the Massachusetts Walking Tour Band.
So they're gonna walk with you and play?
They walk, it's not us. They, it is, they walk from town to town and they put on a hike and a concert. So that's gonna be on the twenty-second.
Okay.
If we have rain, um, um, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, that's the twenty-third. Fireworks are on the twenty-second, if they get rained out, they will bump to the twenty-third and that walking tour, I'm sorry, is on the twenty-third of June.
Okay, so it's the next day after the fireworks?
Right, and that will all be spread out so that if people wanted, if, if the fireworks end up on the Sunday, that they can do all of it that whole day, so. that they can do all of it that whole day, so...
So, it'll be in the afternoon and then fireworks that night.
So, so we will have a busy end of June, so, yes, and we hope people will, if they don't know how to find our information, they can email us at parksandrec@warren-ma.gov. And we can give them the link that will show them all of our activities.
The link's also on the website.
That's true, the link is also on the town website.
And we got flyers too?
Yep, we're working on the flyers, we're gonna get them out this week.
Okay, and then we'll throw those up on the website too, and we should post them on Facebook.
Yeah. Some of our things have gone out on Facebook, but we have a meeting this coming week, and a lot of our summer, spring and summer stuff will be coming out after this week, so...
Lot of big plans.
And I gotta say, it's awesome having you stick with us, thank you very much.
I know, I'm getting old, right?
We still can get another twenty years out of you.
I don't know if that's...
All that institutional knowledge.
That's right. All right, so I got number five. So, board of selectmen approval, so you need us to vote now, huh?
Yes, sir.
So, I think these are worthy projects, and, you know, let's do a vote.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the proposed FY 2024 Warren CDBG grant application and their respective activities to the EO HCL with allowance for minor budget or program adjustments, and furthermore, authorizes the chairman of the select board to sign required forms when prepared. The Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission will assist the town with the overall management of the grant, if funded.
Second? All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. It is approved, thank you very much, great job again, and everybody's hard work. Thank you very much for everything you've all done, and Warren keeps on moving forward. Thank you very much.
I would like to take this opportunity under item six, because it's very important to let residents know that we have a significant construction season coming up in the School Street neighborhood, which has been funded through previous CDBG. So, that whole neighborhood is gonna be under construction, really throughout this whole entire upcoming year, chief. Okay, School Street through CDBG, Prospect Street, Richardson, through the Highway Department, and Otis Street through this Massachusetts One Stop for Growth. So, those, those four streets all simultaneously are all gonna go under construction this year, and it's gonna go probably from spring all the way up until probably October or November.
So, we're gonna have a lot of happy residents during that time.
There's gonna be a lot going on, so I would encourage people to avoid that area as best as possible. And please try to be, you know, patient and cooperative so we can see this through as efficiently and as safely as we possibly can. There will be a resident engineer out there most of the time, maybe not all of the time, but most of the time. We're gonna try to get the appropriate signage in the area going, and so, it's gonna be quite an effort going on in that neighborhood. Also, briefly, the town has embarked on a master plan. We've got a meeting, I forgot the exact date, but there will be a meeting at the Senior Center in May. So, I would encourage residents to go ahead and look, look at the website for upcoming announcements regarding participation in a workshop surrounding the master plan.
Is that master plan website up yet?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
I presume sometime before that workshop it will be. So, we're gonna want people to be engaged and participate in that process. And the last thing, again, I'll be working with Ms. Ramsey in the commission to put out an RFP very shortly to hire a landscape architect to redesign the town common. So, once I get through this application, I'm gonna work with Jim and others to put together a request for proposals or a request for qualification to hire a landscape architect firm to redesign the town common. So, those are the highlights, there's much more, but I think those are the important things.
Very good.
So, thank you for having me, Mr. Paul.
Well, thank you very much, and very good, a lot of good projects coming forward, lots are happening. And it's a very exciting time.
Yeah.
Our town's been busy, you've been busy. Aren't you retired?
Yeah.
This is my last one.
Yeah, sure, you said that about the last one. Another one we're gonna keep on for the next twenty years. Well, do you have anything, sir?
No, I don't, very exciting stuff.
I'll just need the cover sheet from you, the sign-in sheet, and the minutes when they're ready.
Okay.
I'm good.
You're good, Mr. Paul?
Good.
All right, well, thank you very much, we voted on it, so that's all set. We, do we have that tonight? We don't have anything?
No, I'll have to prepare it.
No.
All right, so we'll get that to you.
Mr. Ferrero's anticipated it, and I'll get that to him shortly.
All right, very good.
Well, thank you very much, nice seeing you folks. Thank you for coming, I appreciate it, take care.
And if you didn't sign in, please sign in.
Yes.
I think everybody did.
Nope.
Oh, you didn't?
I guess so, I guess just you folks.
Okay.
All right, thank you, bye.
Bye.
All right, moving on to the next thing, discussion and refusal of the town first of right of refu... What?
We should just have discussion.
Discussion and on the right of first refusal for the property located at Lot eighteen Town Farm Road in Warren, anticipated vote. I think we're gonna table this one to next week. Okay?
Okay.
We're gonna table this one to next week.
Oh, we are, okay, oh, okay, all right.
Good with that?
Yes, sir.
So, moving on, police monthly report. And then, Sue, you know, you want to get out of here now, because I see you getting up. But when you get time, we need to chat real quick, because I just want to run something past you real quick, okay?
After the meeting with them.
All right, thank you. Your turn.
My turn. All right, people, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to start getting those cheaters soon. And my favorite for twenty twenty-four, the department lodged thirteen hundred and sixty calls for felonies, fifty incidents, reports, four on view arrests, six warrant arrests, ten someone's arrests, for a total of twenty ARs per month. One PC or protective custody, one general arrest, a hundred and twenty-five more vehicle stops, and fifty-three citations. Month kind of flew by. Beginning of the month, I attended my monthly homeland security meeting where we had representatives from FEMA, they had presented counsel.
You went right past the vehicles, though.
I know, it's...
You didn't point out any vehicles that are like transmissions falling out or anything like that?
Don't jinx me! My main advantage has been awesome, because I love these numbers. I wish it always stayed like that.
All right.
And one major thing we did have last month, we had two officers leave, Detective Nell and Officer Merkel. Detective Nell was with us for four years, they both went on to bigger departments with South Chris and Sturridge. And, but we had three new officers start, and the three that we got, we have been amazing. We've been really doing a great job. We had Ostapio Rodriguez start, he came from us from, he was in Barry and Westbrookfield. He came over to us from them. We had Officer Patrick Gillespie start, he also came from Barry, and he had twenty-one years in the military. And Officer Brian Pfister, he came over from Holyoke, and he also had time in the military, I believe.
So, I have to say, it feels good when we're stealing other departments. And we're not getting our store from us.
The three of them have been great, great, they fit right in, and it's been, they've been great with the three of them. Also, this month, I went to the drug lab in Worcester. Anytime we have a case that has drugs, it has to go to Worcester Drug Lab for testing. I bring them out there.
And use the state?
No, it's kind of strange, so, all our drug evidence goes to the Worcester Drug Lab at UMass. If it's guns, we have to bring it to Springfield. If it is alcohol or BT testing, which I skipped over that too. Our, all our alcohol breathalyzer and PBTs went for our annual testing in February, that goes out to Maynard. So, I have to drive it out to Maynard for those.
Are they all testing?
Yes, the past.
How do you, how many PBTs do you have?
Two.
Is that enough?
We, two guys on, two shifts, so it...
Because I know, was it last week, one of you guys was calling for one?
Oh, that's probably when it was out with...
The Westbrookfield chief had to come?
That's probably when they were out, so we drop them, then we pick them back up, because they have to be there for seven-thirty in the morning, it's an hour and a half, a drive, so we bring them earlier.
So, you knew they were already being tested?
Yeah. So, it went on like a Friday, and we picked it back up the next Thursday. So, that's probably when you heard them ask for one from another.
Make it certified, they're all good?
Yep. So, that's a yearly thing, so, so that evidence goes to Maynard, and then fingerprint and blood and urine goes to Sturridge.
So, you get, so you, so you know what we're talking about, is the personalized breathalyzer tests, are the little things you blow in on the side of the road, check, you know, what your alcohol content is in your, in your system at that point. But they have to be calibrated and tested to make sure that they're accurate each year and certified. And if you don't have that certification, when you go to court, if you use that as any type of evidence in a case, a prosecutor, well, a good defense attorney is gonna sit there and challenge it and say, when's the last time it was certified?
So, every year, it's gotta go to the office alcohol testing.
So...
And then if there's a problem with the machine, it has to go there fixed, the manufacturer's in Germany. So, we ship it out to Germany, which, that was fun, we had to do that once ago. That took months to get it back, and so, and finally...
They're cheap now, though.
What?
They're only like three hundred dollars.
Yeah, they're a few thousand dollars.
I think...
Yeah, they're not cheap. Finally, at the end of the month, I attended a training that was put on by the Worcester District Attorney, it was early August, training was on drug-endangered children and handle and care initiative.
Very good. Been busy?
Always.
All right. Was Adam tight?
He's got that training that he's doing with his colleagues over at the station where they're revamping their operating procedures, you know?
I think he's ditching me.
He is.
Yeah.
He is. All right, do you guys have any questions?
I do not, thank you for the good work.
No, good.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
And I have to say, talking to some of your guys on the sidelines, they complimented you highly and said that they love Warren because their chief is awesome, and they like working with you and for you. So, that's a good kudos.
Good news.
You know, so, you guys got your back, it's very good to see that, you know, they openly say it. And I was twisting around to say, say something bad about you, and they're like, no, he's great, you know, we love the guy. And it's like, all right. But, no, they're good, so, you got a good crew, and hopefully, we can keep them for a long time.
I would.
You know, so, all right, did you have anything?
I just, we'll also let the board know that I've been working with the chief, and I've mentioned this to the chief, and we're gonna be planning it probably in the springtime, chief, maybe around April, where I think we were talking about, is to have an open house for the residents to meet all of these new officers. Since we've had a significant turnover of officers, more than half the department, we were, we were, the chief and I were talking about this last week, you know, you know, he even suggested, you know, the Senior Center, and I think, I think that would be a great idea, just having people go in there, you know, we'll get some donuts and some coffee and just have some conversations.
Right to donuts. Just keep getting away from that, can't you?
So, I mean, I think that would be helpful, and let, you know, a lot of the residents know and recognize the officers that are out there, and to provide that, that community connection, I think, is invaluable. And the chief and I, we were, you know, we were talking about that just last week, if you remember. So, I think that's, that'd be a good move, especially when the warmer weather peaks up, you know, in April, and people are looking to get out, you know, we do that on a, either, you know, a weeknight or a weekend, some, some way to get people down there where they can have a conversation with the new officers. I think that'd be helpful.
Absolutely, very good, yeah. Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, discussion and possible vote on employment agreement between the town and Jocelyn Bonner for the position of town accountant, anticipated vote. So, we met with Jocelyn.
Jaclyn.
Is it Jaclyn?
Jaclyn.
Jaclyn Bonner.
Jaclyn Bonner. So, we met with Jaclyn Bonner earlier, and discussed her contract with her. And Ms. Bonner are in agreement with it, and she seems like a very good fit for the town. And I think it's gonna be a very exciting having her on and having a full-time accounting, accountant in the position again. Mrs. Tammy Martin has left us for a top administrator position, and she's doing very well over there, from what I'm hearing. And we had a need to fill that position, and now we filled it. And I think it's a good opportunity, she's coming from...
Charlton.
So, a larger town, more busy, but she's very eager to start with the town and very excited to take on the position, so, do you have anything?
I don't, I think she's gonna be a great position to wear a team here.
Very good.
I'm good, sir.
Anything, Mr. Paul?
No, I just, I want to thank the members that helped out on the screening committee there, you know, Rich and Don Swistak, our treasurer, and Madeline Wotazek, our interim turn accountant and former turn accountant, town accountant, for their work in fielding all the applicants. The town did get quite a few applicants for the position. And, you know, it was very clear to the committee that Jackie stood out, and based on her experience with the town of Charlton and her VEDAR knowledge, was critical for what the town is needing at this time. And so, I think that she would be a good fit for the town, and I'm happy that the town was able to negotiate a contract with her, and we look forward to her starting on the twenty-fifth of this month, twenty-fifth of March. I do also want to give a shout out and kudos to the interim turn accountant, Madeline Wotazek, for really stepping up for the town that she loves, very near and dear to her heart. She could have easily said, you know, I'm retired, I'm not interested in doing that. She didn't, she came in, and she was, she was very helpful, extremely helpful, with us getting in, getting us to this point today where we are today to get Jackie here. So, thank you very much for your dedication, your hard work, certainly doesn't go unnoticed. And I'm really excited to have Jackie start.
And I concur with you for Madeline. Again, she's supposed to be retired, she's supposed to be enjoying her life, and, you know, she stepped up and helped the town out again, and, you know, when we had a need, and amazing job, and she's always been an asset to our town, and helping out in every way she can, and, you know, definitely thank, thank you for all that she's done, so... Anything else, Mr. Paul? So, let's do a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Jaclyn Bonner as the town accountant. Second?
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Denny Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Number five, we've already done. Number six, discussion anticipated, discussion and acceptance of the ambulance abatement, anticipated vote.
Are we doing this with the chief?
He said two.
Yeah, because we've been meeting, so, and it's typical.
Yeah.
Same stuff that you do every time, we can't, we may not agree with it, but there's only so much money you can get away, get from somebody, and what the insurance companies are willing to pay.
Yeah.
Right?
Make a motion.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Anybody else have any questions over here? Right?
Is it worth just putting out the numbers so that they're part of the record?
So, in October, the insurance disallowed, and this is all insurance disallowed. For October, it was sixty thousand, four hundred and six dollars and sixty-eight cents. November, forty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. In December, forty thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents.
Almost a hundred and fifty thousand in...
Three months.
Yeah.
So, a lot of money. It sucks that we can't get that money, but the insurance company's not gonna pay, that's what's already negotiated with the insurance companies, so, what they'll pay. And that's, that's usually like Mass Health and things like that, that's pre-negotiated that we can't even touch, so... Right?
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the ambulance abatement for, it is, wait, for second quarter?
Yep, second quarter for fiscal year.
Oh, this is fiscal year, second quarter FY twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
Danny Biddies, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Discussions on items for the board of selectmen to consider for capital planning, anticipated vote. Let's get that. So, Mr. Ferrar?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is the form that I had sent around to, uh, all the departments for capital planning requests, um, and capital, uh, uh, improvement projects. Um, this is just something that, you know, um, the, um, the requests are, are due back next week. I know the board has talked about several different, um, projects, which I, I have written down for, you know, this building. Um, if there's any additional projects that the board would like to consider or, or, or put, uh, towards, um, you know, that, um, that capital improvement budget and plan. Um, you know, we could, you know, if you could take a week to think about them, reduce them to, um, you know, uh, to paper or just send me a quick email. And I can get them put into the, um, put them, put them into the, uh, into the queue and have the committee review them.
Okay. So we have no projects yet?
Well, no, uh.
We're just taking.
One, you know, one of the projects I know that was mentioned at a previous meeting was, you know, addressing some of the mortar issues and the repointing issues of this building. Um, you know, possible looking at the windows, um, you know, those, you know, tha- that, that type of aspect of it. You know, looking at, uh, you know, a possibility of having a generator for this building, um, you know. Those, those, those projects I have written down, um, I wasn't sure if there was any additional projects that, that you were, you know, looking at in terms of.
So you already have those.
Right.
Um, projects? Those are the only things that I, uh.
Yeah, I'd have to think about.
So I mean.
Could you just email us that list?
Yeah, I will.
Cause it'll.
Yeah, and then, you know, between now and next week, you know, you know, would be, would be enough time if you wanna think, take a week to think about it.
Cause those are the major things because we're obviously.
Right.
We need windows and, you know, the repointing of the building, all the brickwork. It's gonna preserve the building much longer because a lot of that mortar is starting to work its way out of the, the joints, so.
So we, capital planning meets on Tuesday.
Yeah. Right. So you just got the, you need us to approve these or are you good?
Well, no, no, we're good. We're, I think our next meeting is, is, is the following week, actually. So there, there, um, our capital planning is going to be, um, you know, not gonna be meeting next week. These are due back next week, so I think we're gonna meet the following week.
Wait, I set that off for the twelfth?
That's when your, these, these requests are due back.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you, you still have a week to think about it, you know.
Yeah, right.
Right. And all the departments got these?
Yes, yeah, I already received some back. I received already, uh, Chief Lavoy's, I've got his, um, so.
Fire truck? Exactly, three million dollars. Is that what he's looking for, a fire truck?
One of them, one of them was a replacement.
Oh, you got more?
Oh, there, there, I think there was like four or five requests.
Did you get any requests in yet?
No.
He just wants a building.
Yeah.
All right, um, well, you guys. You, you, you're gonna be putting a vehicle on every other year or every year, right? Not this year?
I won't have to pull one until next year.
Okay.
We'll kill him in the, in the, in the, in the program.
But you're gonna do that for a capital planning.
Yeah.
So I would put, I would submit one now for a capital planning, so they know each year that's something you're gonna be looking for. So they get a heads up. So instead of spending all, all the budget on a fire truck, they can kind of whittle in a little car for you once in a while. Yeah, for the price of a tire on a fire truck, you can buy a new car.
Cost the tires and I can get a whole vehicle.
All right, um, all right, very good. Anybody have any questions about it?
No.
No, sir.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Ferrar.
Thank you.
All right, um, discussion and approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five board of selectmen budget, anticipated vote. Uh, did we get the insurance in there now?
So, yes, we have a, um, a, a, a very, very close ballpark number, okay? So, um, based on the conversation that I had with Joanne, our rep from Maya, um, they're anticipating about a thirteen thousand dollar increase in insurance. Between, uh, general liability and, and workers' comp. So that's gonna be meaning anywhere between a hundred and sixty-seven thousand to a hundred and seventy thousand, um, for, for total premium between the two. Um, so currently, that would equate to about a thirteen thousand dollar increase or a, uh, a, about a six percent increase, um, from, from where, where we are today.
For the general, uh, liability insurance?
So liability in, in workers' comp, they, they've lumped them together into their ballpark of what they think that they're going to, uh, you know, what the premiums are gonna be. They, they think it's gonna be between a hundred and sixty-seven thousand and a hundred and, and seventy thousand dollars. They don't have the breakout yet. The breakout's not available between, uh, liability and workers' comp yet. But what they're saying is it's gonna be about a thirteen thousand dollar increase from last year's rate to this year's rate.
So what I'm looking at right now in Selectman D.
Mm-hmm.
Ten thousand? Yes.
So Selectman D, uh, last year was, was like a hundred and fifty, let's see here.
Hundred and sixty thousand.
Hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty thousand?
Going up to, um, yeah, one seventy is ten thousand dollars.
Yes, uh, ten thousand dollar increase, yes, yeah.
Ten thousand dollar increase.
But you're saying there's another three thousand in there?
Well, they, they, they said it, it could be potentially up to thirteen thousand, you know.
Okay.
Um, you know.
So I'm looking at Selectman D.
Mm-hmm.
And for insurance liability, it's going from forty-six thousand to forty-nine thousand, which is three thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
It's a six point five two percent increase. And then the insurance workers' comp is going from three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars to nine hun- uh, three hundred and ninety-three.
Uh-uh, that's total. Go up when, not down.
So.
Liability went from a hundred and fourteen to a hundred and twenty-one.
Well, no, I'm looking at Selectman, the workers' comp, and it goes from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And it's three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and goes to three hundred and ninety-three thousand.
No, that's, that's the little line below.
That's the total.
Total for this whole box.
That's the total for Selectman D, not just the liability or workers' comp.
Oh, never mind.
Yeah, okay.
I need readers.
I got some right here.
All right, so let me draw a line over here, okay. That makes more sense.
In, in those breakouts.
So you're going from a hundred and fourteen thousand for, uh, your liability to a hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Estimated.
Estimated, which is a seven thousand dollar increase. And then for the workers' comp, you go from forty-six thousand to forty-nine thousand.
Estimated. I don't know, we don't know the exact breakouts, but they're saying.
It's a ten thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, about that, about that. Um, again, they, they, they don't have the final breakouts of the liability in workers' comp.
Well, when are they gonna have those numbers?
They're hoping by sometime next week. That's what I.
So we have to table this again?
Well, I, I, I mean, you have a general idea. It's not gonna be more than a hundred and seventy thousand.
Which is what represents there.
Yeah, which is what represents there. Um, we don't have a, uh, we don't know the breakouts between.
So it could be less.
Could be a little less, could be a little less.
It's not gonna be more.
No, no, no.
So what I did is I just kinda did the average of what the difference had been every year and just kinda did the breakout that way, but we're not sure. I made sure it came up to a hundred and seventy so that you would see what your bottom number is.
So they didn't give you the averages. You just averaged out what it's been increasing each year.
Well, no, he gave me the number, no.
So they, they could actually say, well, we're gonna jack it up another ten percent.
He gave me the number of a hundred and seventy thousand for the two of them.
Okay, so they told you it's not gonna go over a hundred and seventy?
No, right.
They guaranteed that.
Yes.
It just depends how it's divvied up.
Right.
Depends on how it's divvied up. I don't have the breakout.
But I thought you guys needed to see that bottom number so that you could vote on the budget, whether it's divvied up this way or a little bit different. The bottom number is still the bottom number.
And I, and I also noticed, um, you know, uh, uh, on the first page here, um, you know, the percentages, i- i- it's, it's not going to reflect in, in section A. The regional dispatch number for, um, twenty-four, um, was actually gonna be higher, so that percentage is gonna be changed. Um, the original dispatched number, um, for the budget was much higher than that, so that, that percentage is gonna change. That's gonna be a, a, a smaller increase there than, than what is anticipated there.
Much smaller.
Uh, well, what was the original budget number? Do you have the, um, do we have the original budget there? Um, I got the, uh, let's see here. You're, you're probably about.
Well, it's fifty thousand dollars more than what the seventy-nine.
Right, so if you add the fifty to that, um, you know, you're gonna have a fifty thousand dollar difference there.
So you're looking at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand?
Correct.
Right.
From seventy-nine thousand.
Right.
Right. Because we, so the, so the percentage will, will be less of an increase.
So, but we're looking at FY twenty-five, so you're talking, you're saying FY twenty-five is gonna be a hundred and twenty-nine thousand?
Uh-uh.
No. The, the, um, the, the actual number is one seventeen, three hundred.
So what happened?
So the budget's correct, just last year's was.
Correct.
So the increase is going to be different. It's gonna actually be less this year than it was last year.
So do we owe that money then?
No, 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 no. No, it's, it's, I don't know how that number, uh, it, that number shouldn't be there.
What happened was, is it was, we allotted for a hundred and twenty-nine, but then you came in at seventy-nine. So we took the fifty thousand and put it towards the radios.
Okay.
So when the accountant gave me this budget, that was the number that was there because of the fifty thousand going towards the radios.
All right. Hopefully we'll be done by then. We'll let you know if we finish up before you get back.
Well, my computer's there, so I have to put it.
I'll put it in the office for you.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So do, do we need another week on this?
I, I think so, because, you know, um.
Let's table it the next week.
I- i- in, 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 there may be, you know, the board may also wanna, you know, look at the managed IT services too.
Yeah, we're looking at that right now. Now they come out less?
They would be less if, if you chose that company that was here last week. Um, I have another company that's, uh, interested in making a proposal, um, that wants to come in front of the board. Um, you know, there's a possibility I could get them here relatively soon.
Next week?
Possibly, or if not, the week after.
We just appear like, we gotta kind of, we're like the last ones to get our budget done.
Right, right.
Everybody else is done and set and Ray is like, you select me, I'm like, I'm behind a bar here.
I, I did let the FinCom know that a lot of this budget is, is, is all, is already all set. There's a few moving parts, right? So the moving parts would be the insurance, the moving part could be the managed IT services, um, that's where the majority of the moving parts are right now.
And then the regional, uh, radio number.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's not.
That has to be a fixed number because we need to know what that's gonna be.
Well, it is. It, it, the, the fixed number is one seventeen, three hundred. Just the previous year's budget, somehow the number had changed. I don't know why it changed, but it, it, it's, it changed. So the percentage will be less of an increase this year.
Won't be.
But they got paid and we explained the fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Because we used that towards radios because they gave us a break because there was probably some sort of.
Grant.
Regional grant that went into it.
Correct, which is the last year.
Which we don't know until.
Right.
So the FY twenty-four number should go back to what it originally was.
Was printed, right, right.
I see what you're, okay. I was gonna say, the other thing is with the computer stuff, we're not gonna pay any more than what we're paying.
Correct.
So if we, if we go with the number now, we're okay. We could always lower it on the floor.
Yeah, you could.
Right, I mean.
If you wanted to.
The purpose to do this is to get the budget down as low as we can, that we can present to the public.
But we know we're not gonna go higher.
Right.
Right.
You might as well stay with what you got, right?
Yeah, yeah, why change that? Okay.
Well, let's hear the other company, see if we can get them in there and see, see what their number is, because that's not gonna change. That's only gonna be a few thousand dollars if it changes.
Well, uh, there's, there's a possibility of saving up to ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
Well, that's much different.
Okay, okay.
So it'd be nice to be able to get that number in there. And, and if it leaves, settle on the company that's the lowest right now.
And it's on the state bid list.
Which is, yeah, and they were very nice. They provide everything we need. They have the same services. We're not losing anything. There's gonna be a, theoretically a flawless transition. Nobody's gonna even notice it. And then we can even lease computers from them, so. We should put that on, at least on a vote. For.
I mean, unless you don't wanna hear a third company, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to hear.
I'd like to hear a third company, but.
All right, you wanna hear a third company first, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's find out, well, you could easily get what their numbers are gonna be.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
And what they can provide, if you can get that next week or before next week, just email it to each of us.
Okay.
And you could ask us if we wanna hear the third company and then we could table, you know, table the, um, that line item.
Yep.
For the budget and, um, vote the following week if we need to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but if we could save another ten grand out of the budget.
Minimum.
It'd be nice to be able to save the ten grand.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, that's ten grand we don't have to try to get from taxes. Right? So we'll table the budget till next week.
Okay.
Good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Ray's like, just getting your budget done. All right. And we're on to warrants and bills, anticipated vote, warrants.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number fifty-one payroll, fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and six cents. Number fifty-two vendor, ninety-six thousand, fifty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. North.
Yeah, you got that, that final number is incorrect.
It is.
I changed it, but I didn't print it.
All right, so Northeast. Well, I'm gonna read it. Northeast IT for thirty-five, thirty-one, eighteen hundred, forty-four dollars and ninety-four cents and five thousand dollars.
So math quickly.
What's all the, uh, what's these other charges for?
So, uh, five thousand shouldn't be there. That, that's coming from a grant, um, and, uh.
So what are we paying for, for Northeast IT? Three thousand, five hundred and eighteen hundred?
Yeah, the bill, the, the bills, the bill is, yeah, so, yeah. So the bill is sixty-eight, forty-four, ninety-four. Five thousand of that is being paid through the Maya grant, um.
But we still, you still have to approve it.
If you, yeah, still wanna approve it there.
So we have to add five thousand.
Yeah.
Cause it's, yeah.
It's part of a bill.
So it's actually.
So the sixty-eight hundred number is what we're doing?
No, we're doing the sixty-eight plus the thirty-five, thirty-one.
Thirty-five, thirty-one is the normal ma- maintenance fee every month.
Yeah, okay.
So we gotta do the three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one, the one thousand, eight hundred and forty-four, ninety-four, and the five thousand.
Correct.
So add it all together. We're at, what, ten thousand?
Ten thousand. Ten thousand.
Something.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so Northeast IT for ten thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
Okay.
Uh, Amazon for four hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. C two MA Adams, seven hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. Verizon for a hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. The phone cleaning, thirteen hundred dollars. American Tower, twenty-two hundred dollars. Hamden Communications, fifteen hundred dollars. Pine Ridge Technologies, three hundred sixty-six dollars and forty cents. Tri-State Truck Center, a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Um, minutes? Uh, we have none?
No minutes.
Okay, Town Administrator, report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I have a couple items that I'd like to report to the board on. Number one, um, the, uh, the, the Tri Truck Center for a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars is indication that we just received our, um, our Western Star, uh, Upfit, uh, Dump Truck, Plow Truck, um, that has been in production for the last two years. A hundred and forty-four thousand of that, as you may recall, was approved and reserved through ARPA funds. Uh, so that is, that is an ARPA funds expense of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. The remaining of the truck, um, which is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, uh, the remaining part of that, uh, is through a town meeting article that was already approved, um, and reserved. Uh, so the truck was delivered this week. Uh, I worked with our highway surveyor, uh, to get that, um, on our, uh, insurance fleet, uh, policy. Um, it is insured, uh, it is at the garage. It's a huge vehicle, a real nice piece of equipment. Um, Jeremy is, is working on getting it registered, uh, as well as, uh, stickered, um, and it's gonna be-
He's putting plow on that too, right?
And, and there's a plow that's gonna be put on it as well.
Does he have a plow yet?
Uh, the plow is, is coming. It's coming. It's coming. So, um, that's gonna be, uh, added.
Be ready for next winter.
No, well, it, it could be ready in a couple weeks, uh, if we have, hopefully, we don't have any more snow.
We don't have any more snow.
No, any more snow. Uh, but, um, I, I would imagine that the plow, um, uh, will be put on relatively quickly and soon. So, in, in case there's a, a need for it. Um, but it's a beautiful, uh, truck. Uh, I'm sure he's gonna have it, um, uh, on, on display, and he's gonna take a photo of it, um, as, you know, part of our, um, uh, ARPA, one of our ARPA, um, programmed, uh, items that the town had used their money on. This week I had, uh, I, I had Verizon Wireless, the, uh, uh, the, the people from Verizon in. Their state liaisons were in, uh, on Tuesday. I had a meeting with them to talk about OneTalk, um, which is a, a program in which they, um, offer to, um, to cities and towns across, uh, the state, um, where, uh, they, 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 they do desktop phones. They do, uh, wireless communications and wireless phones, um, and they make it a one-stop shop for the entire town. As you know, our, our phone system, uh, in this building, uh, is outlasted its life expectancy. Um, I, we can't get phones, desktop phones, if they need to be replaced. We have to, you know, look onto Amazon to buy used ones, um, and hope that they've, they work. They do not, um, they are not, um, making those types of phones anymore, those devices anymore. Um, the lines that are, that are there, they're the old coil lines that are, um, that are, um-
Copper lines.
Copper lines that are, um, that are, that are, um, you know, you can hear conversations, uh, within, uh, the phone. If you, if you select a certain line, uh, it's not secure. Um, you, you know, it's, it's just a system that's destined for failure, complete failure in the future. Uh, and the town really should be looking towards other solutions. Um, this in particular, um, Verizon Wireless has the OneTalk where it is a VoIP system. Um, however, there's redundancy within the voice system, uh, that has a, uh, a, a, an option to go uh, onto their wireless network if the internet goes down. So the redundancy is, is that it, it, it transfers right over to their wireless four G.
Cell phone?
Yeah, four G or five G network.
Do we have to pay for that?
No.
If we don't have to pay for the cell service?
No, no. So that's the redundancy there. So if your internet happened to go down, it would go off of the cellular network. Uh, and there's also, if there's a need for, for boosting that cellular network, they have, uh, they have devices and solutions that would boost that cellular network for Verizon. Currently, right now, the town is paying with all its phone bills throughout its, all of its departments, um, on average, between eight to nine hundred dollars a month, um, on, on phone, okay? Whether it be desktop, whether it be wireless. I think that there's a solution where we can save, um, some of the, of the money that it's costing us each month and potentially get some new phones, uh, for everybody, and to be all on one network. Um, where, you know, if you call the police department now, you have to dial their number, where we could just dial extension two hundred. They would come in, they would engineer the entire, um, system. They would, they would talk to departments as to, uh, you know, how they, you know, like the system, not like the system, um, in terms of layout, uh, voicemail accessibility. Um, I know the police department and the fire department somehow are on some Crocker, uh, communication system, uh, which most of the town is already on Verizon, but they are on Crocker. Um, they're paying a, a, a pretty significant bill a month just for Crocker. We could, you know, cancel that and all be on one network. Um, we could be on the network, um, uh, for Verizon in that they would also, uh, manage it. It would also be cloud-based. Um, you know, they have, they're on the state contract, uh, for-
Cloud-based.
For, you know, for, for, for the management system of the, uh, of the messages. And so that if you, you know, if somebody was to leave a, a voicemail messages, uh, it could go right to your, uh, email. Um, you could also, um, you know, if, if, say, for example, you're at home and you have a, a desk, and you have your desktop, and somebody's ringing your desktop, it could be transferred right to your, your cellphone. Um, you know, or if you're out of town, uh, and you're on business, uh, at the State House.
Sounds expensive.
Um, well, I, 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 I think that there's-
You're getting into a lot of stuff that sounds, and I, I, I'll tell you right now, I am not a fan of VoIP phones at all because I've had nothing but problems with them at work. And it seems like, because they're internet-based, there's programs out there that find the phone numbers and just start spamming them. And I get spam constantly on my phone ringing of unrelated things. And it's like, it's all out on the internet. It, it just seems, when we swi- switch from a standard copper line to those VoIP phones, and it's just getting worse and worse and worse. And it comes from multiple different numbers, so you can't block a number. It's the same companies, but it's multiple different numbers. So you can't just block the number. You know, cause then they send it from another number.
Right, you have to block all these numbers, right?
Which, how do you block all the numbers? If they, thousands of numbers.
Yeah.
Or more, that they're spamming off of, and we get calls from people that are like, "Yeah, you called us." "I didn't call you." Like, "Well, we got a number from, you called from the number, and just previously, our phone did a false ring." You pick it up, there's nobody there, you hang up, and then a while later, somebody says, "You just called us." And it's like...
This is work?
Yeah. Yeah, they've been nothing but problems. Everybody, it's cheaper, but people are pissed with them. The VoIP phones are horrible. You guys getting the same problem?
Same problems.
The, the police station is currently on a voice-over IP system, so their, their system currently is voice-over IP. So, uh, I did talk to the chief. He said that there was a, you know, maybe, you know, three or four times, you know, where the internet had went down, and he had, you know, no, no, no call, no ability to make calls. He had one copper line. He doesn't, with their voice-over IP system, there's no redundancy. There's no wireless, uh, you know, four G or five G network that they could go off of. This, that's, that's their sell, is that they have redundancy where, if the internet was to go down, it would go off of their wireless, uh, network.
The, the other problem we have is there's no nine-one-one connectivity. So if you dial nine-one-one, it's an internet phone. There's no connection.
I, I'm not sure how that would work. I didn't, you know, I didn't-
There's no connection.
It, it doesn't say where the location is.
It should.
No, it's, yeah, they do.
They get nothing from us. We can't track them.
Yeah, that should work.
Yeah, cause that, that's something that they've improved on.
Unless they change that, uh, unless they program it in specifically to that location.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
They, they must have to do that, but right now, we, we have no connectivity because we can't track anybody down when they call.
Cause there'd be a router in the building, and then that's, the router's location would be where the phone, uh, where the nine-one-one calls coming from.
It goes through a server.
Yeah.
It goes through a server, and the server, it goes through the fiber optic lines for us. And no generation phone. So, so that's a problem. I don't know if you run into that with your company.
With the fiber optics, yeah. Same thing. It's a Verizon system.
And that's what we got, is a Verizon.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, these are, these are, these are definitely questions that, you know, obviously, if the board wanted to have them, they'd be more than willing to make a, a presentation in front of the board.
It seems like something we have to go to because they're not supporting the old systems, and we can't get anything from the old system. Our old system's failing, so it's kind of, we're getting pushed into this system.
And then in three years-
But I'm not happy with it because there's a lot of problems with the system.
In three years, you're gonna have to change the phones again.
Probably.
We've already, it's, it's a cycle.
Oh, they, they, they swap all your phones every three years?
Yep. So the other problem is back to our slow internet speed out of this building.
So that, that's a, that's another, um, another area in which, um, you know, I, I, I talked to them about, you know, how Comcast has, you know, internet speeds and, and variations. And they, they said that, you know, they feel confident that they could, um, you know, based on the speed that, you know, if we were to upgrade to a, um, a, a minimum of like two-fifty, um, download and twenty-five upload, that, that, that they could work with that. Right now, I mean, we're, we're at, at a very, we're at the minimum basic.
We're like at what, five or six megabytes right now?
Twenty-five down and five, five up.
When he was actually doing the test, it was only a few.
Right, and so, you know, that's probably, on the Comcast side, looking at it, it, that's probably about a thirty-dollar more a month in, 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 in terms of the bill. So currently, what we're paying right now, for thirty dollars more a month, I could call Comcast tomorrow and tell them, "Do the two-fifty, uh, with the twenty-five up."
Right now, we got twenty-five, and we don't even get twenty-five. So there's a problem with our in, our system because we're not getting the download and upload speeds that we're, we're supposed to be getting.
Yeah.
Derek was doing the test here. We're getting far below what we are supposed to be getting now.
Well, that's what they, that's what they, that's, that's how these companies, you know, they say that they're gonna give you, you know, within these parameters, that, that, that's what you're gonna get for speed. Now, if everybody's on the, the network at the same time, the quality goes down. You know, there's variables that, that, that they-
Well, that's the problem though, because you need the peo- people who still work on the internet. And now the phone's gonna be based on the internet too. So every time somebody picks up a phone, somebody's computer's getting throttled down. You know, I, I'm just not sold on the internet phone thing. It just doesn't seem, yeah, you seem, you save money. But we don't have internet speeds here. We, it's not like we're on a fiber optic line. If we can get a fiber optic line in the building, we already have, and, and runoff, that, well, and runoff of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Then, then we'd probably be, it'd be no issue. But right now, with our current internet, in dealing with Comcast, it, it's not even a feasible thing. You know, it just, the internet's so slow here.
I think this is like, if we got a new IT company, this is like their first project, is figure out this internet thing. Can we use the fiber we have, and if not, what's our next best thing?
So, uh, when I would talk-
Well, that would be either Comcast or Verizon, and we'd have to get a contract with them.
Yeah.
And they'd have to run the fiber optic line in, and then we'd probably have to look at, are we gonna keep our server? Because are they gonna run the fiber optic to the server? What are they gonna do? How are we gonna get our internet?
Yeah, it would have to run, it would-
Can the server run off a fiber optic then?
Sure, yeah. It's just, it would go into a router, um, or a switch.
So when I, when I, uh, talk to the, um, government relations person at Verizon, you know, just because there's a, there's a possibility of a fiber line out on the street, Comcast may not bring that fiber line just to one building. They may be, they may be working on the infrastructure right now, whether it's, you know, at some point, they're gonna, you know, branch out and bring fiber, uh, into, into the homes, or, 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 or try to branch out their network. But they, they wouldn't do that directly into, um, just one building.
No, but we have it going into the building. That's what I'm saying.
Do we?
Yeah, I can show you where the box is.
I thought it was just right in the road.
Nope. We got a grant, I don't know, ten, fifteen years ago.
It's in the building?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, alright. I thought it was out on the road.
Uh, if we go in the boiler room, I'm pretty sure I can find, uh, show you the box.
Yeah, when we're done.
Yeah, well, yep.
Okay. So, I mean, those are some of the moving parts, um, with the OneTalk people in Verizon. Um, I did talk to a few other communities that have used, uh, the OneTalk, or currently are using the OneTalk.
Here comes a guy that we know. Is that, is that your fiber optic line, isn't it?
So, well, there's actually two fiber optic lines that run to this building. Um, one is ours that runs from West Warren Elementary. But it's part of, um, they ran fiber optic. It goes up South Street, down sixty-seven, goes up all the way to Coy Hill, cause the line that comes in here comes into us, and then it goes up to Coy Hill. And I believe it goes sixty-seven into Westbrook Field. Cause that was part of some, some years ago that they built. And I believe it can carry, um, internet in that, cause I think that's kind of what the whole thing was, was like the start of one of those projects.
It's fiber optic infrastructure?
Yeah, cause Quay Bog, their internet is fiber optic because when like the MCAS and all that switched to being all online, they needed fiber optic because the amount of internet traffic that whole building has. So two schools get their internet through fiber.
So if we can get fiber optic, optic into the building, I think that would be a game changer.
Oh, yeah, that would be huge.
Although they, they'd have to guarantee that there's some way of, like, pushing out any of those unsolicited calls. There's gotta be something out there, like a protection.
Similar to like the email systems where they have spam protection that all fits configured right. VoIP phone systems have that, cause ours at work, it's same thing. We get them occasionally, but starts, it, the system kind of recognizes calls that come in through their whole network and realize, "Hey, this number's blasting, you know, three hundred places in the last minute. That's probably a spam." A lot of times, it just sends it right to voicemail. I don't even get the call.
No, when I get them, they come in, and then it's like, a few minutes later, no one. And then a few minutes, no one. And then a few minutes, and they just burst. And it just happens for an hour or two, and they stop.
It's all, it's all the configuration of the system, you know? Do you have email filters for like spam emails, but if it isn't configured, it's not gonna work. So we, we spent quite a while making sure ours was-
I work for the government, so it's the lowest bidder.
Eh, exact, which is probably part of the problem, is the lowest bidder. And, you know, that company's probably selling the numbers off on some email list.
It costs another five dollars a year. We're not spending that. We'll take, we'll take all that spam calls.
But, but I believe the fiber optic line, I believe that's Verizon. I could be wrong, cause when we had talked with Comcast about running a fiber line from here to Quay Bog, they had mentioned they'd have to get in touch with Verizon to get a, well- they had mentioned they'd have to get in touch with Verizon to get a quote on how much that project would cost.
So I'd ask them. You know, we'll go see if this.
Fiber in the building?
So we'll see if the fiber's in the building, but if they can do it that way, then that could be a game changer for us. Um, because the expensive part would be to get it to the building, cause they're not gonna pay for it. We're gonna have to pay to get it to the building.
Yeah, that's. I, I could tell you for, from just over a mile from here to Quay Bog's about thirty thousand dollars, about thirty grand a mile to run fiber. That's without like any permits or anything. That's just the fiber and some, you know, people going up and running it.
Maybe we sell it to all the houses from here to there. We'll make it up.
Sure.
So we're talking about the VoIP phones. And, um, Mr. Farrar was talking about, um, how Verizon could replace all the phones, set us up on a network that has a redundant system. So if the content goes out, we go sell it.
In some of the phones, um, that Verizon, you know, would, you know, possibly recommend may be free. Uh, and some of them, you know, the fancier phones with the bigger screens, um, you'd have to pay for. But, you know, there's, there's different plans. There's probably five or six different phones out there, um, with redundancy.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff, that have, uh, different options. I'm just saying that it's an option that, uh, the board may want to consider at some point. Um, I will definitely get some additional information. Verizon said that they would even send out a trial, um, you know, a free trial, um, phone that they can circulate throughout, you know, different departments and different buildings, um, see if it works. Um, and see what the quality would be.
That's not a bad idea.
So, um, you know, that's an option.
Send them thirty, you know, demos.
And then lock the door.
Yeah, like thirty, forty trial phones.
Never return them.
Yeah, very, he asks for one.
All right, great. So, um, there, there, that, that's what happened. One of the, uh, highlights of this week. Other highlight this week was, um, uh, Northeast IT, our IT provider, um, installed, uh, all of the firewalls at the senior center, uh, the sewer plant and the highway, uh, garage. Um, that was part of a grant that I had gotten through, uh, Maya, uh, five thousand dollars is gonna cover that. The balance of, uh, eighteen hundred dollars was coming from our, um, our IT budget, our hardware budget. So we are now, uh, secure there. We have subscriptions to the Sonic Walls now for four years. So we don't have to budget, uh, for those for four years. We have a subscription for four years at those places. Last year, if you recall, we did the, um, fire department because they didn't have a, a firewall there. Um, and, you know, given that they're public safety, we thought that that needed to be addressed immediately. We did that. This year, we got, um, we were able to get a grant, so we addressed those other buildings that were, you know, that were not protected. This week also came in the mail is our renewal applications for cybersecurity. So I'm working with our current IT provider, um, on, on getting that application filled out. We will have it, uh, in the mail back to Maya well in advance of the April first, uh, date. As, uh, as the chief had indicated, we do have, uh, three new police officers. Um, and those officers this week participated, um, in a Maya training simulator training class um, on Tuesday, uh, in New Braintree. Um, this will have a significant impact of savings, um, as we get a Maya credit, uh, for the, um, for the, um, officers participating, uh, in that simulator. And that is a great business, uh, best business practice, uh, in Maya's viewpoint. Um, this week we also had Chris Elmore. Uh, he completed his onboarding, uh, process with the town. Um, he is starting on March eighteenth. He's the new hire, uh, at the wastewater treatment plant, um, uh, for the sewer department. Uh, he's really excited of joining the town and he's completed all his paperwork. Obviously, uh, this evening, uh, we have the new town accountant, uh, Jackie Bonner, uh, who will be starting on, uh, March twenty-fifth. This week I did a, a Zoom call with TOS, uh, who is also a IT provider, TOS. Um, and I met them at the, uh, Maya convention. Uh, Rich and I had met them at the Maya convention, uh, in January. They are also on the state contract for managed services. Uh, that was the third company, TOS. IT management solutions, um, is, is the third company that I was recommending that the, that, that we get a, a quote from and possibly a presentation on. Uh, this week, um, the FinCom as well as the sewer departments, uh, sewer department met, sewer commissioners met to talk about the budgets. I know that the FinCom, uh, met, uh, yesterday afternoon to discuss, uh, police assessors, uh, and highway budgets. Um, I do know that, um, they're continuing their dive into their, um, the, the, the rest of the department's budgets. And they're continuing budget meetings next week. Uh, capital budgets, uh, are due, um, uh, on Tuesday by all departments. Um, and we're meeting hopefully, uh, the week of the eighteenth to, uh, review them. The assessor's clerk position, uh, we have several applicants so far. I've contacted, uh, the chair of the board of assessors, uh, Mr. Martin, uh, to see, uh, when he would like to start looking at some of the, uh, applicants, um, for the clerk's position. Um, uh, and, and hopefully trying to fill that, uh, that position relatively soon. And that would be, I'll complete my weekly report to the board.
Okay, thank you very much. When's the next capital planning meeting?
Capital planning, uh, we were looking at the week of the eighteenth. So probably ni- the nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. Four o'clock.
Right.
Anything else?
No.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Great. Um, moving on. Uh, new business. Anybody having new business?
I do not.
Nothing, sir?
Nope.
No? Okay. Old business. The old business.
Nope.
No, sir?
Uh-uh.
Um, correspondence. Uh, we got a letter from the members of the Warren Fire Department in honor of Dennis Duroger's retirement. And it's dated March first, two thousand twenty-four. It says, "Dear Warren Select Board, as past and present members of the Warren Fire Department, we are writing you to honor our brother Dennis Duroger. Whether we are retired or active members of the department, we all have one thing in common. We have all worked with and respected Dennis for the, for his commitment to the town over the last fifty-six years. Dennis has touched countless lives over the years. And we are grateful for his commitment to the town and are honored to have served with him and on the Warren Fire Department. Many years, years ago, Dennis had the idea to, to hold an annual banquet to honor those of the fire department for their service. And has worked timeless, uh, timelessly since to keep this going. With his retirement, we feel it only fitting that the town honored Dennis for his service and commitment. We would like to ask that the August twenty-sixth, um, two thousand twenty-four be officially proclaimed Dennis Duroger Day in the town of Warren. Sincerely, the past and present members of the Warren Fire Department." And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. At least six, sixteen signatures on there of this happening. I think we could put this on the agenda and vote on this, if you wanna do that. It would be good honor.
Do we wanna do it? Like at the beginning of August, so it's a little more timely? Otherwise, we do it now. I mean, who's gonna remember, right?
Well, we could still vote on it so they can know and prepare.
Yeah, okay.
Because if we vote on it, they prepare and then we can just.
So we gotta re, repost.
We'll have to publicize it.
Yeah.
During that time.
Sure.
And I'm sure they will too.
Yeah.
And we'll just put it on, we'll put it on our, our calendar, the town calendar, if we chose to do that. And identify it as add that.
Yeah.
Um, you guys good for the next, next week's agenda?
Sure. Yes, sir.
Mr. Farrar, did you have anything to add to that?
I think that would be a, a nice touch. Dennis has done a lot, uh, for the town and.
Absolutely has.
You know, it was nice to see him at, we all saw him at the, uh, at the banquet.
Yep.
You know?
He's still gonna be doing banquets.
I hope so.
No.
No.
Who's doing the banquets?
Don't know. He's fine.
Well, that's a problem.
Oh, cause he organized them.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
That's a lot to do too. And he did that all in his own time, so hopefully somebody picks up from it. I think a police officer should do it for them. No, chief?
Actually, I talked to Adam about doing a combined thing, but.
That would be a good idea.
That would be a really good idea. Because you guys are too small to really do your own.
And we don't do anything like that.
Well, you do something like that at Christmas, kinda.
Well, they have a Christmas.
Party.
Party. But it's not like a banquet, like you, where you can honor members and stuff and everybody can crack jokes about the chief.
That was not easy, we shouldn't make fun of him.
We can still make fun of him. He could review the tape. All right. So, yeah, let's put it on the agenda for next week. All right. And then, uh, Chris, another correspondence, a letter from Joseph Conrad. Bought the gasoline spill by the underpass and noticed that the sidewalk was getting wet due to dripping from the railroad bridge above.
So, I'll say that the water under the bridge is due to water coming up from the ground. There is water. It does drip on that side of the bridge and it actually is probably more of like a slip hazard.
Well, the bridge, the bridge really isn't there to stop water.
No, it's not. And it's gonna drip, yeah.
It's to prevent the train from going down onto the road below.
Yeah.
So.
But even when that area of the bridge is dry, there's still water. And the water is coming up from the ground. And Jeremy is gonna look at that again once it warms up and they can really get in there and work on it.
Oh. So Mr. Conrad is actually saying that the, um, for the gas spill, that there was a gas spill and, um, squad two and six firemen responded. The fire department contained the spill and, you know, put down absorbent material and cleaned up the absorbent material and they acted all, um, within less than a half an hour. And they should be commended for their swift actions. Yes, the fire department is awesome. They got an awesome chief. And they all do a great job and we commend them for the good job that they do. So, yes. Where is Joe tonight?
That's why I sent the letter. He's gotta say something.
What did you guys do to Joe?
There was an open hole in the cemetery. Wondered how, no comment on that.
Yeah. One of the things that I don't like about the water is that makes the lines wash out. The middle line of the road. And now, you know, five out of ten times I go through that, I get a car that goes over the line and puts my life in jeopardy. So it's, that's the only, you know, as a safety, besides when it gets cold and you get a fun.
I see experience.
The bridge kinda needs to get some attention. How that's done, you know, everything kinda drops down and it's the lowest point there in the road and.
It's just a situation.
Yeah.
Have to just deal with it, little by little.
All right. So, thank you, Joe, for, even though you're not here, you still took the time out of your day to send us some information and we appreciate that. All right. Moving on. Comments and concerns. Do you have any comments, concerns?
I do not.
Sure.
Yeah.
Comments and concerns?
Nothing, sir.
No, thank you.
Public.
I didn't know where you told him, what was tabled tonight, the lot?
We tabled it because we're gonna look into it and we'll, um, review it next week on the agenda.
What is there to look into?
Well, because we just gotta put it in front of us. We haven't had time to review it.
Yeah, but you're on the planning board. You reviewed it three weeks ago when I brought it into you.
That's the lot. I don't know if you were familiar with the lot.
But the town has right of first refusal on this property, so we'll look into that, evaluate it, if we want to entertain that or not. And then we'll decide next week on that. Uh, we should, we can easily let you know next week on that.
I just can't imagine why the town would even be interested in that, period.
So.
You're supposed to be pro-business and you're supposed to be, you want people to move the town. I told you three weeks ago that I had a house sold on that lot. And you're holding it up.
So.
It's another taxpayer.
Let you know next week.
And you guys do need taxes the way you spend money. You're, you need the tax money.
That's why we whittle down that budget down so much. So, but we'll, we'll let you know next week. Um, it'll be on the agenda next week and we'll give you a decision on that one.
Okay.
All right.
If you're interested in those lots, I have others that are very overpriced by the town. I'd be more than happy to sell some of those also.
Well, we're not looking for overpriced lots.
Well, that one's, for one lot, that's a lot of money for one lot.
Well.
What can you, what can the town do with it? What, I, I wanna know what the town could do with that lot.
So we'll, we'll discuss that in, um, the agenda next week if we wanna do that or not.
Okay.
All right. Um, anything else?
No, no, that's plenty.
Okay. A- anybody else have any comments and concerns? Right?
I just feel like out of deference and regard for Joe Conrad. It's daylight savings time starts this weekend, so second o'clock, I had one hour Saturday night officially and Sunday morning at two A.M.
Well, thank you very much. That does sound like something Joe.
I, I, I hope, I hope all of them.
You have done him well. Thank you very much. Thanks, Ray. Nobody else? Nobody else wants to pay tribute to Joe? Dan?
I'm all set.
All right. All right. Um, nobody's on Zoom?
No.
So all we have is cable, so seeing nothing further. Our next meeting is Thursday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four at three P.M. for an executive meeting. And at six P.M., our regular meeting. So, March fourteenth at three P.M. is an executive session meeting. And at six P.M. is the regular meeting on that day. And then, you're up.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
For Chi Harker, aye.
David Pittis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously and we are adjourned.